One minute. How much time do you still have? It's 7:00 PM, call to order, Kalih, Palma Neighborhood Board, City Monthly Reports. We're gonna start with the Honolulu Police Department. And whoever's gonna be presenting, if you can come up here, so we can record you.
Okay, good evening, I'm firefighter woman Rocky Solvo with Engine Six, Kalih, uh, third watch. Um, the statistics provided below represent the confirmed number of incidents in the Neighborhood Bureau's geographical area for the previous month. For more details on the incidents and related mapping information, please visit the Fire Response Map on our HFD website at fire.honolulu.gov, under the News and Info tab. Uh, should you have any questions, please email the HFD's Public Affairs and Media Liaison at hfdnhd@honolulu.gov. Okay, so for incident statistics for September 2024, uh, we had one structure fire, four nuisance fires, uh, nuisance fires include rubbish fires outside a structure or vehicle. We had eight activated alarms, so no fire there. Uh, for emergencies, we had 168 medical emergencies, one motor vehicle collision versus a pedestrian, 20 motor vehicle crashes or collisions, one ocean rescue, and two hazardous material incidents. Um, and now for the fire safety tips and announcements, um, our fire safety tip for this month, smoke alarms, we wanna make them work for you. This year, the National Fire Protection Association's Fire Prevention Week campaign strives to educate everyone about the importance of having working smoke alarms in the home. For more information and resources, visit fpw.org. Uh, we want you guys to install smoke alarms in every bedroom, outside each separate sleeping area, uh, like a hallway, and on each level of the home. Uh, test smoke alarms at least once a month by pushing the test button, and replace all smoke alarms when they are 10 years old, or stop responding when tested. Ending any questions?
Any questions for the board? Any questions online?
Yeah.
No, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do you want the stats, or you guys have a copy already?
If you can keep, uh...
Sure, you can have it.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Moving along to Honolulu Police Department, District One.
Good evening Chair Ibanez and everyone in attendance, Lieutenant Ronald Segusia representing the Honolulu Police Department, District One, community area responsibility. Uh, thank you guys for your guys' time and patience, I'm gonna be providing you the information for the Liliha River Street, King Street area. Uh, for more statistical information, you guys can go to our public website at www.honolulupd.org. And I'm just gonna get right into the stats for September 2024. Motor vehicle thefts were one, uh, the previous month was two. Uh, burglaries were one, previous month was zero. Thefts were five, previous was six. U M Vs or car break-ins were two, in the previous month it was one. Assaults were two, the previous month was three. Uh, there were no sex assaults reported in both months. Uh, graffiti cases were zero, the previous month was one. Uh, drug offense-related cases were two, and the previous month was four. So total cost for your area, total cost for service for your area was 353, uh, compared to the previous month of 309. So at this point in time, there's no criminal breaches to report at this point in time. Just wanted to, uh, relay some of the upcoming events, so this, uh, Saturday, uh, the parade, uh, Pride Parade will be happening on October 19th. Uh, but the start time has changed and it'll be happening at 4:00 in the afternoon, instead of the morning hours like last year. Uh, starting location will be the Atkinson Drive entrance to the Alamoana Beach Park. Uh, the parade will be leaving, uh, into Waikiki, uh, and ending at Kapialani Park. Uh, we're just asking our drivers to, uh, prepare accordingly, uh, for road courses and the heavier traffic that will be happening on that day. Uh, with Halloween upon us and, uh, so the safety tip for October will be food tampering involving candies and treats. Uh, we're asking our community members to be very cognizant and diligent, uh, in checking the candies and our treats for our Kiki, uh, that we'll be, uh, getting on that evening. HPD has a procedural information notice in place, uh, for our officers on how to handle these situations, and the notifications that need to be made. Our officers, uh, that are called to these types of cases will be, uh, making further attempts to determine where the tamper candies came from. Uh, however, I feel like the best cure is prevention, so please, please, please check, uh, the wrappers, um, and if they're compromised, discard the candy. Uh, only go to trusted neighbors, family, and friends when trick-or-treating. Uh, shopping centers will also be handing out candies, but please leave nothing to chance, and have at least two people check the candy twice before consumption. At this time, I'm gonna yield back the rest of my time and take any questions from the board members and public attendees.
Any questions from the board? Any questions online? Any questions from the community? Oh, hearing none, thank you so much Sergeant!
No, thank, thank you, have a good night.
Have a good one, bye.
You too.
Moving along with Honolulu Police Department, District Five. District Five.
Good evening, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening everyone. So Lieutenant Yamashita from District Five, I wanted to just, uh, go over some of the concerns that were brought up, I believe, at the last meeting regarding some, uh, the e-bikes. So the e-bikes, just wanted to throw out some of the, um, information for you guys, for operators for bicycles. They have to be at least 15 years old, and the electric bike must be registered or household member, under, um, who is at least 18 years of age or older. Anyone operating a bicycle under the age of 16 years old is also required to wear a helmet. Uh, electrical bikes, as well as bicycles, are restricted from operating on sidewalks located in business districts, which is like downtown and Waikiki. And you can find out more information regarding e-bikes at this website on, it's www.hbl.org. It's the Hawaii Bicycling League, there's some great useful information on top of there. Uh, another concern I believe that was brought up at the last meeting was the residentially challenged people living alongside the Kalih stream by Kalihuaina Elementary School. So I've been having my officers make checks over there daily, and so far, we haven't come across any, uh, residentially challenged people in the area. Uh, my, my recommendation is to call the police, and meet with us, and point the individuals out, so we can at least know and get to learn these individuals in the area. Now I'm gonna go into the stats for the month of September compared to August. So for aggravated assaults, uh, we had two compared to five. For auto thefts, we had eight compared to 14. For burglaries, we had three compared to 10, a decline. Robberies also was a decline, we had, we had two compared to three. Sex assaults, we had five compared to two. Simple assaults, we had eight compared to 14. Thefts, we had 42 compared to 46. And unauthorized entry into motor vehicles, we had nine compared to eight. Total calls for service for the month of September was 2,791 compared to 2,878. Um, the robberies, actually, the two robberies that we had, uh, one of them actually occurred outside of our district, but it was reported in our district, so it was, it didn't occur in your guys' area. The other one was involving a juvenile male who was at, at the park with his friends. He was confronted by approximately 10 to 12 other juvenile males that attacked him and took his bicycle. The case is still pending, um, the detective from a robbery detail is assigned to it. He was unable to locate any video surveillance in the area, and he tried contacting the complainant's father, but was unable to get a hold of him at this time, so he left a voice message. As far as the sex assaults, we had five, like I stated, three of them occurred outside of, outside of our district. The other two, um, one of them, our officers were able to actually apprehend the suspect, he was placed under arrest, and the detective is presenting the case to the prosecutor's office. Um, the other one, the suspect is still outstanding and at large, um, this one was a female that met another male online on social media, and we're still, um, accepting leads, uh, there's been a prime, sex crime detective actually assigned to that case. Uh, we also have a Meet the Command coming up on November 12th. It's gonna be held at the Moanaloo High School Cafeteria located at 2825 Ala'i Lima Street, and it'll be held from 17:30 hours to 19:30 hours. We encourage the community to come out and meet the command. Um, Lieutenant Segusia already gave you guys a good safety tip with Halloween coming up. Uh, at this time, I'll take any questions, comments, or concerns.
Any questions for the board?
I do, I have a question. Hi.
Yes.
Um, Barbara Nandiosha, uh, did she ask everything about bringing back the DARE program to the elementary schools?
The DARE program, um, I believe they would like to, we would have to speak up to our, uh, specialized services division on that.
Okay.
To get further information if you wanna bring it back, yeah.
Reinstate that. Can we request, yeah, can we request that? I will personally maybe down there.
Sure.
If, if I can, uh, LT, if I can just say something?
Sure. Also, I have Sergeant Martinez on, online with us also today, I know he wanted to share a few things with you folks, if you guys don't mind.
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, good evening, uh, real quick, actually I was asked to give you folks the, uh, our active shooter training, our alert training. So, uh, when we're ready, you let me know when we're ready to move on with that. But just real quick for the DARE, I do believe some schools still do have the DARE program, it's been revamped recently. And, uh, uh, so there's some schools that I've been to, there actually do have their program, so, uh, if there's a specific school you guys are, are inquiring about, you can let me know and I can check on that.
Uh, I mean, I would like for that, I specifically Kalihuaina, uh, Elementary School, but maybe all the bigger schools in, in our district would be nice. I think they didn't have it way back then, and then when Officer Ho passed away, they...
So, I, I'm aware of it, our program went through a whole change, they revamped the whole, um, curriculum. So, it's, it's based in line with, in, in Kalih, we, our community policing team runs what we call the RAP program, Real and Powerful program. We're actually at nine schools right now. Uh, every year, we tend to add a school, and it's, and it kind of mirrors what DARE does. It's a lot of, uh, information, a lot of, um, making good choices, we have presenters, we have vape, so, um, nine of our schools have that program. And, um, I know some of our nine actually have our program and the DARE program, so, yeah. The nine that we're currently at?
Yeah.
Uh, Kalih, Kalihuka, Kalihuaina, we are at Pu Hale, we are at, um, La Nikila, we are at Likeleke, we're at, um, Kalih, and we are also at, uh, Ka'iva'i, and Fern.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and every year we try to, every year we try to add at least one more school, this year we were trying to add Kapalama, but it just didn't really materialize, because we, it's a lot of coordination with the fifth grade, uh, coordinators. But we try, we, we try to add at least a school every year, our goal is to be, uh, eventually all the elementary schools in Kalih.
Nice, I agree.
Um, just a question, I just wanted to know if you could share what the program looks like, like what resources do you give? Uh, how do you share your lessons, how do you share about, you know, drug use and vaping use?
Yeah, so, uh, we've been doing this program since 2012. We actually started at, um, our, our goal was we started at, um, sorry, trying to blank, I'm thinking faster than I'm talking. We started at, uh, Dole, Dole Middle School, because the calls for service to there were just outrageous. So, we started with the sixth graders there, and what we learned was, we needed to get them a lot earlier. So we decided to go into the, we decided to go into the fifth graders, so we meet with the fifth graders. Uh, like today, I just, we were just at Pu Hale, and today's topic was juvenile laws and laws in general. So we teach them about status offenses, today was status offenses, uh, you know, runaway, true and see, um, beyond parental control, surfees, or, or injured speed, those are status offenses, we teach them about that, and then today we talk them about the most common, uh, law that we see that kids their age get, uh, arrested for, which is like assault, robbery, uh, um, threatening, bullying. So, that, that was today's lesson, but our lessons include, we have 808 vape, they come talk to them about vaping, because the teachers have, the teachers have said that vaping is a big problem. We've seen some schools, um, we've seen some schools that they've actually caught third graders with vapes. Um, we also talk to them about, um, personal space, like inappropriate touching, both, you know, if being, being a victim or being somebody that participates in it. So we have, um, the Ku, uh, Kapialani, uh, Sex Abuse Treatment Center, they come and talk to them about that. Uh, another, another subject that we do is, we have the Attorney General's Office come, and they speak to them about, uh, this is a little bit more broad, but it has to do with bullying, and they touch upon a little bit about vaping, and then, um, they touch on some of the, um, uh, drugs. And then, from there, we, we have other subjects, so what we try to do is, every year, we sit down with the teachers and say, what is the concern that you guys are seeing at your school? And if it's the same, if it's the same across the schools, or there's a common theme around the schools, we try to then focus our curriculum to fit that in.
Very good, thank you, excellent. Okay, I'll just continue, thank you so much, we're gonna move along and we'll get to your presentation soon, border water supply, Iris?
No, I'm sorry.
Moving along, Honolulu Authority for Rapid Transit, Bert, Marissa?
She's here.
Hello, good evening Chair Ibanez, um, board members and committee members. My, um, Marissa Gonzalez with the Honolulu Authority for Rapid Transportation. So thank you for the opportunity this evening to, um, for me to provide an update on the rail projects. Joining me this evening is Gabby Camacho from Non-Construction. So not much has, uh, changed, uh, since my last report, um, to, to you guys, so I'll quickly cover some key items. Utility relocation work is ongoing along Kahamea Highway, Dillingham, and downtown, allowing for the future construction of the columns, guideways, and stations. The Dillingham utility work is expected to complete by early 2026, uh, with guideway and station construction starting summer 2025. We do have micro tunneling on Koho, uh, this work is progressing well and is scheduled to complete, uh, by next month, so we're very excited about that, um, progression. We also have a new video rendering that we, um, have released, actually today. So it's a, it's a heart Dillingham construction sequencing video. It shows the utility relocation and construction phases along the corridor, along the Dillingham corridor, and it provides, um, basically like an overview, uh, through the project completion in 2031. It's available on our heart website, and we will also be including, um, the update and, um, information in our Monday eBlast, and also YouTube channel. So you can access to that online right now on our heart webpage. We'll also be holding a virtual business and community meeting on Thursday, October 31st, at 1:00 PM via WebEx. It will cover the utility relocation projects, lane closures, and public impacts in areas including Kalih, Ibanez Downtown, Chinatown, and Kakaako. Um, you can, again, visit honolulutransit.org for more information. Um, you can also, uh, view the video and access our event calendar on our website. Again, honolulutransit.org to watch the video. Um, and that concludes my updates. Uh, you can also email us at info@honolulutransit.org, or call our 24-hour project hotline, 808-566-2299. So I can do my best to answer any questions at this time, thank you.
Thank you, any questions for the board? Any questions for anyone online? No, thank you so much Marissa, have a good evening.
You too, thank you Chair.
Aloha, uh, now we're moving on, thank you. Uh, moving on to board business, filling a vacancy, one at-large seat, anybody that wants to nominate? I nominate, uh, Mr. Tom Beck. Mr. Tom Beck, will you accept?
We expect that he...
Thank you.
You can, you can accept, it's okay. Any nominations? Hearing that, we're gonna move on. Of approval of minutes, Wednesday, September 18th, first Wednesday, January 81st. Any motion? Seven minutes.
Oh, okay.
Ask any questions.
Any cor, any corrections? No. Motion to accept?
That's it.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Minutes approved, see, resolution urging legislature to adopt good government reform.
Hi, hearts, so, this resolution is on... Okay, I gotta speak a little bit louder. So this resolution's based on government reform, um, basically, there's a lot of focus within our whole government, and this resolution was introduced by me, but rather by the organization, HAPA, Hawaii's Alliance for Progressive Action. Um, is Aria there, or Matan? Aria? Someone raised her.
Hi, um, Aria's not here, but I'm filling in for her, so if there's any questions on the reso, I'd be happy to answer.
Maybe you wanna talk a lot a little bit?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
I got it, I have to prepare, Maria, do you have anything regarding the resolution?
Um, I briefly heard you kind of introduce it, I think, is that cards? Sorry, I'm not really, I can't really see the video, but, yeah, so, kind of what you said, this resolution is basically a good governance, uh, reform that aims to, maybe, to increase integrity and efficiency in our state legislature, so, um, I believe there were some amendments to this resolution, so basically, um, there is statutory and also, um, amendments to the House and Senate rules for the 2025 legislative session. Um, but, yeah, if there is any clarifications or any questions regarding the reso, um, I'd be happy to answer. But, that's basically what, um, again, the resolution is, is to adopt several good governance reforms, and, um, and it's mainly for House and Senate rules and statutory amendments.
It was emailed to you guys, and it's in Google Drive for two months now. Sorry, I don't... Here, give me the resolution. You do have a card, you do have, thank you. You want, Eric, um, Eric has, um, come?
Hi, Eric.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, so, um, you know, I'm trying to find it, I apologize, I didn't get a chance to read it. Can you just name what good governance changes you are requesting in the, in the resolution?
Um, yes, so for, specifically for the House and Senate rules, we're asking that each committee, um, make testimonies, uh, immediately available for public review, that's one of them. And that's at least 22 hours before the hearing, and at least two hours before hearing for late testimonies. Um, the other one is that committees should vote on all of the bills that are referred to the committee, and, um, next one is that bills don't create or expend, or bills that are non-fiscal bills shouldn't be referred to either the Finance or Ways and Means Committee. And then, lastly, for the House and Senate rules, um, amendments to bills, uh, must be in written form in the possession, in the possession of legislatures before the amended version of the bill when we voted on. And then in terms of statutory amendments, um, we are asking the, we are asking the state ledge to, for the upcoming legislative session, to have a bill that would fully fund the Campaign Spending Commission to ensure they have sufficient resources, um, enact the comprehensive public financing option, um, prohibit campaign contributions, um, and, and, sorry, I'm, I'm just briefly kind of going over it, but there are more details to each of the amendments. Um, and then, I think specifically for this neighborhood board, um, enacting a automatic voter registration by switching an opt-out system to remove, um, another barrier for voting, for voter participation. But that's kind of just a, a summary of, um, what is being asked in this reso.
See, my, okay, just, you know, my, my only, I guess I have a question, so, um, you know, I guess, well, that was just my concern. Is, you know, I didn't think like forcing a committee to vote on something, um, I think could, uh, shut down discussion and, and, and further changes, because it's not just, it's a, it's a long process, that's my concern there. And, and I don't know if, um, sometimes I see value in, in having things referred to fiscal, because, I mean, everything eventually affects the budget in some way, shape, or form. Uh, as for the other ones, you know, I do apologize, I wish I could engage you a little bit more on the other amendments, but I, I guess those are, those are pretty big changes, I'm not necessarily against them, but those would be my concern.
Yeah, I, I definitely, you know, hear you with your concerns, um, in terms of the committee voting on all of the measures referred to them, um, it's not necessarily asking them to vote individually for each committee, um, one of the options could be having slates of, you know, which, of what bills the committees will hear and what bills the committees won't, so at least we know what happens to each of the, uh, each of the bills that are introduced at the state, um, legislature. But, uh, again, it's not necessarily to vote on every single bill, but slates are also an option that we're thinking about, and I do, you know, agree also with your concern about, um, referring non-fiscal bills to the finance committees. But for us, I think our biggest concern is, um, we want the legislative process to be efficient, and that also means preventing good policy bills from having to go through unnecessary steps sometimes, and, you know, the legislative schedule is already really tight, so, um, it's more so streamlining the process, um, and kind of getting rid of unnecessary burdens for just policy bills that doesn't necessarily have any, you know, um, anything to do with, with funding or money or anything like that.
I appreciate, yeah, I really do appreciate the explanation, I like what you, you're trying to do, I think I'd still retain my kind of concerns, um, but again, I, I wish, I, I apologize, I wish I would've been able to read it a little bit more depth, there's something else you said that a little bit concerned me, but I just don't know enough about, I can't recall it right now. Thank you for letting me ask.
Of course, thank you.
Any more questions? Or discussion? For the resolution? Anybody want to move to a, motion to a?
Motion.
Any second?
You said a motion to reset it, or next, is that correct?
Should I accept it?
Done.
We adopted it.
Oh, adopted, go.
Table, uh, motion to the table, any second to the table?
I'll, I'll second the table, but I really do wanna look at it and vote on it next time, so I do apologize and thank you for coming, I feel bad for going for that, but I do wanna take a look at it, but, thank you.
Tabling it gives opportunities to look at it a little bit further and have more evaluation and possible discussion, and to reach out to more people and ask more questions. We'll email it, sorry. Are you tabling it? We're gonna move on. Okay, thank you so much, Chair, we're moving on to resolution urging for artificial intelligence regulation in Hawaii.
Yes, so that resolution, I created it in, uh, during the time when California introduced their AI regulations. They're the first state to introduce AI regulations, and so far, the only one, and I think they passed it, from what I last remembered. But I am very concerned with the rise of AI, especially within our technology, uh, from collecting data to also, uh, what's it called? From collecting data, profiling misinformation, creation of like, uh, creation and stealing other artwork and other more. I think, uh, this, I think just having a set regulation would be a good start, to make sure that we can help people along the way. Um, both from like, getting their data collected, to also making sure that no one's, uh, what's it called, no one's things are stolen.
Plagiarism.
Play, there we go, plagiarism, so, yeah, that's, I think just a start. Uh, this is kinda, the resolution is still, I'm, uh, a bit, a bit barren, because I still don't know what AI regulation still looks like, nobody does. Same with the EU, um, I based it off... Same with the EU, um, I based it off the, uh, European unions and also, uh, California's bill. That must have been passed into law already, so it's still a bit barren, um. But, you know, just having a start of saying we need AI regulation is a good start.
Further discussion I have for this is. I do believe that AI to some degree can be dangerous to our labor force, especially when it speaks to those that work in. Union positions, like hotels, reservations, accounting, such as like those kind of departments that can be. Sometimes threatened to be third party. So I do agree that to some degree, regulation of AI, AI in Hawaii is necessary in order to save. The fragile labor force that we currently have in place right now. Any other further discussion?
Uh, yeah, just.
Motion.
I actually really like this and, and, uh, I know you're concerned about being, being barren, but that's actually one of my, um. That's actually part of the reason why I like it, because I think AI is so quickly developing. That I think if we make specific regulations, you can almost, um, stymie any growth opportunities or business ventures that people could get involved in. If you make it too restrictive, so I actually like the loose wording, because it's still. It says that, hey, we need some protections here, but also it's not going to stymie that growth, so I, I, I like, so, for that very reason.
Right. And I'll add on to that, um, there has been debate on which AI regulation is better, because apparently California is a start. As it is the only legislation introduced within, I think, in, uh, the United States, um, among any state legislatures. But the, but people have argued that the United Uni- the United Nations, the EU's uh policies on AI regulation is more better, because it is, uh, it is broader. Which I have to agree, the broader, the broader the law, then the better it will be, but at the same time, I think we gotta draw a line somewhere, so, yeah.
I, I know there's other board members available online, I'm interested in hearing what your, what your opinions are. And then, and I'll say all the names, Ken, Delia and Lloyd, any opinions, discussions, questions about this resolution? Delia, Ken or Lloyd, you're online.
I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay.
That was chair.
Thank you, go. Go ahead.
Can you hear me? Um.
Yes.
So I just wanna say, I actually, um, am in speaking as a part of this resolution, um, similar to what Eric was saying. Other reason also being is because, you know, one of the things that I was looking at on the research side is. In some cases, it may not be a one-for-one replacement of jobs too, right? Uh, because of, of the, the need for the things and what AI can't do. Some people are saying, oh, AI can't do that, this right now, AI can't do that right now, but it's getting very close to the next, uh, the next step. And, um, level of just be able to do very renewed and intricate type of things. The way that, uh, some of the new robotics are being handled, so, so I am in agreement that the language is, um. It's enough where, yeah, we do have to have regulations, but we don't, we have any. Things that are just, you know, so specific that it's not scrub, so I speak as a part.
It's very good. Lloyd, do you have any opinions, discussion, questions about the resolution?
Uh, no, I do not.
Okay, thank you so much.
I have a comment about AI. I think people really, um, underestimate the power of AI. Let me just give some, um, background, I use AI to plan my trip to New York for my son. Like you just type in, give me an itinerary for me and my eight-year-old son during Christmas, and it gave me for, for the itinerary like that. With all the updated information of where to eat, what places to visit, it is crazy. But I do agree that we should put some sort of. Uh, yeah, regulation, only because of the power, it, it also would affect equality, um, for the jobs. People are using it to. Basically skim their way through college, I just think people use it on their reports, and it's, you know, it's not the same kind of, um. Intelligence that we have, oh, I mean, it's, it's more advanced now than what you could Google back then, it's great, it's writing reports and it's. Giving people easy A's, and that's crazy, because the next generation that's gonna be, um, leading our world, they're gonna just cheat their way through, it's get, it's kinda scary.
Right, and I'll add on to that about that intelligence part, I forgot which research it was. So, trust me, but at the same time, when I find the research, I'll send it to everyone if they want it. Um, there was a study showing that because of Google Maps and other forms of GPS. Geographic, uh, intelligence within people have actually has been lowered. So not a lot of people are actually aware more about their surroundings and also what, uh, on what geography is and like. Oh, where's this place and that place, and I can actually say the same, um. Because I'm a victim of this, I actually don't know the difference between punch, punch bowl and birtenia, so.
Oh.
That's how terrifying it is, and like, I remember my mom was telling me like, go Kala Koa, uh, street or avenue, and I was like, where is that? Because I realize so heavily on Google Maps, so, I think some form. And I'm not saying all technology is bad, it is a progress, but we always have to know where, what the, uh, what the sacrifices of conveniences have. So, with AI, obviously, it's gonna get worse, especially with education, especially with the environment, because it actually takes up more carbon emissions. Cetera, et cetera, there's so much more about AI, so, this is a start.
I just wanna, thank you, so I just wanna make it very clear and on record that I am in support of it for the regulation to protect the current jobs that we have right here that could be. Or, or threaten to be outsourced, especially the labor union jobs in Hawaii, for that to be built in for a regulation for that to be. Safe and untouched. And to have some kind of negotiation with all labor unions if that were to happen at all, especially what's happening at Hilton Hawaii Village. For those kind of jobs to not be outsourced, like reservations, so I do, am, am in agreement with some kind of regulation for AI. Any motion, Ken?
Ken has.
Ken, go ahead, Ken.
I don't, chair, I just wanted to bring out, I, I can't, uh, I don't, when I was looking at the resolution, I didn't know if it mentioned in there, but. Just something for this board to consider, one of the things that will happen is, uh, as some jobs get kind of replaced, uh. There is nothing really to kind of stifle that in a sense, from a, from a taxation standpoint, so what's called a value-added tax when it comes to certain things. Might be something, you know, definitely looking at, considering, obviously this board doesn't have, you know, the authority for that, but just. For the board members to be aware of what, you know, what a value-added tax does, uh, in regards to AI, if it starts to tickle or, you know. Many positions and jobs.
Yeah, that, that's the concern that has been raised already, Ken, thank you so much. Any motion to it?
Motion.
Second.
Second, art second.
Resolution has been adopted.
Okay, I'll, or any objections?
Any objections?
Who's objecting? Do you wanna go back to that question?
No objections, we're passing. Moving along, we're passing, it's, it's.
All right, yes.
Resolution urging for fake job listings.
Wait, m- Mr. Beck.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, if I may interject, um, see, we do pass this law to protect. People who are used to AI because of its.
Oh, please come in the front, thank you, sorry.
It's when the, the board already wants to back.
Yeah. Um, because of its effect, um, through computers and, um, it's basically international. Um, we pass this law, uh, to restrict some type of, uh, AI access. How do we, uh, who's gonna be the, uh, people to watch this, how do we, um. Who will give the power to, uh, oversee that, is it gonna be through state, city, um, federal, because this basically is a civic process, yes.
Yeah, so in this context, uh, if this resolution is basically, um, it's only a resolution, yeah. But I'm thinking of this more so as a statewide law, so obviously it would be handled by the state, and if I had to assume maybe Department of Commerce or something like that? Not really sure.
But they'll, they'll, they'll.
But they'll figure it out, they'll figure it out.
The state will figure it out.
Yeah, the state will figure it out.
Yeah, if I may ask, you were saying that California has a form of it already, in place, do you know who's running it, then who's, is it the state?
Yes. It's the state, yeah, the state, it's a state-introduced bill, and it was passed by, I think, Governor Newsom, s- at this point. So I think the bill's already in, like, a law, so, yeah.
So, who has the authority, the, um.
Who has the authority to?
To, uh, monitor this, basically, uh.
To monetize?
Uh, monitor, um, because if someone does violate the rules. As such, i- is it gonna be going through the Justice Department, or does it go through?
To be frank, the resolution, not the resolution, when I made this resolution, it was still when the bill was, you know, the California bill was still a bill. Um, maybe it's a law now, I have not checked upon it as of late, so, not sure.
That is a good question, so in order to enforce a ready way, any kind of laws they provide, it has to be given to a certain type of department, and you're on the right path.
Right.
Is it DOJ, is it the AGs, is it prosecutor's office, is it DPP, we don't know yet. That is up to the state legislature to, uh, figure that part out, but I think that's your question.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
It has been adopted.
Okay, great, thank you.
Next one.
Love it here.
Alright, next one.
So the next is, thank you, resolution urging for fake job listings and ghost job illegals in Hawaii.
So, unemployment is at an all-time low, I think, I have not remembered, but they said it's pretty low, three point one percent as of late. But, uh, if we delve in into like how unemployment looks like for some people. Uh, recently, there is this thing called illegal jobs, uh, not illegal jobs, ghost jobs and fake job listings. So basically, for example, on indeed.com, a business can actually upload that they're hiring, but in reality, they're not hiring. What does that mean? They're not gonna hire anyone, they're just having it so they can say, oh, we had this many applicants. You know, we had like a hundred applicants apply for us, and then they also collect data on you, so sometimes they'll ask questions like, oh. Are you a certain race, or you have a disability or anything of the sort, so they just put it up as a way of saying that they have had many applicants. And they're also collecting that on you, like demographics, and also how many people are being hired. And they won't even hire, and it's actually becoming quite a common practice. Um, if you see, see the statistics, one out of five job postings won't result in a hire, and this was in twenty eighteen. Now, today, one in two job postings don't result in a hire, um. And from resume builder, in a survey of May twenty twenty four, of the six hundred fifteen hiring managers. Forty-one percent of the companies said they posted a fake job, three in ten companies have big listings on their, uh, sites or their job boards. And nearly sixty percent of companies have collected resumes to keep them on bio for a later date, with no intention of immediately hiring anyone. So, this literally harms, you know, the labor force and anyone that is actually genuinely trying to find a job, because. For me, in my experience, I had a hard time finding a job. So, and like many of my other, uh, college friends are also trying to find jobs, and we're just trying to make ends meet, and. You know, this is what's going on, like, no wonder kind of thing, like, I'm not getting hired or my friends aren't getting hired, so. Uh, you know, I don't think this, uh, bill, not bill, yeah, I don't think anything has been introduced within our state or any other states as of late, so. Having this, uh, form of regulation, once again, same with the AI, would lead into at least some form of regulation.
Okay. Any discussion? Motion to. Here is no discussion, any motion to adopt?
Motion.
Second, I wanna say, that's kinda crazy, thank you for pulling up these stats, I, I didn't realize, thank.
Yeah, um, anybody opposed?
Yeah.
Hearing that, we adopt.
Alright.
Okay. Thank you so much, cards. Moving along, presentation, active shooter train Sergeant Jose Martinez, District Five. Hi, Sergeant Martinez. Hi.
Hello. Okay, uh, so, usually we give this training in person, I think that's better, um. Actually, you get the most out of it if it's in person, but what I'll do today is I'll give you just the meat and potatoes of it, I'll give you guys. The, the, the first version. Yeah, presentation, the slide, you should, done it once before on, uh, a Zoom meeting, but it really takes quite an hour to, to give a full presentation. So, uh, if you guys want. Person, it'd be a good thing to do, but basically what we do is we teach praise training. The civilian response to an active shooter event, is based out of Texas, uh, State University. And that's what the department has adopted as the active shooter training. And basically, in, in, what it does is, uh, it teaches people, it's the acronym we teach, ADD, which is avoid, deny and defend. And what the training does is, we go through and we explain how, uh, people go through different. Stages, when, when there's a, when there's an active shooter event or there's a critical incident. People tend to follow this, this pattern, because we're, we're all human, right? And what the training does is it tries to show you how we go through these different stages of, um. Dealing with the, the, the critical incident, and the first one is denial. When a crit- when an incident happens, first thing people wanna do is they wanna deny the fact that this is happening. Your brain is trying to trick you to say, you're okay, you're not gonna be hurt, you're fine, because that's, that's, that's your lazy brain trying to tell you, you're gonna be fine. So you start thinking, oh, i- i- in cases of, of like an active shooter, people think, oh, those are fireworks. Those are firecrackers, or there's something that's backfired. And what that does is you're wasting a lot of time that you could be deliberating, and you could be forming a plan to get yourself safe. So, that's why the ADD, which means avoid, deny and defend, the first thing we try to teach everybody is if when you're in a critical incident or an active shooter situation. The first thing you wanna do is avoid the situation completely, get yourself removed from that area. Um, a lot of the, in the statistics that we have inside the, uh, presentation. It shows that a lot of the active shooters or the critical incidents happen in populated areas, malls, schools, uh, community, uh, centers. Fairs, so, what you need to do is. Kinda be on the defense a little bit, I, I know, I know it's, 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 it's hard to do, and a lot of people say you can't live your life that way. But you really have to start thinking, when you're at certain, at certain venues, where's the nearest exits? Is it behind me, is it in front of me, um, what, what wills to happen if I need to get out of here quickly? Not just in the, gen- not just for like an active shooter or critical incident, but what if there's a fire? What if there's something that you need to go out, uh, one of the videos that we show on the training is, there's a nightclub fire that started, because they had pyrotechnics inside. And. When people finally realized something was wrong, they tried to run out the front door, which is the door that they came in through. Not realizing that there's six other exits in that establishment, and it shows how people are, um. So accustomed to, to, um, when, when, when they're in a high-stress situation. We call your lizard brain, it takes over, I know some of you remember that from, um, class, you have the animalistic brain and you have the, you have the, um. The human brain, we call it, so the human brain tends to be more thoughtful, your, your thinking is more, um, clear. But when you're in a high-stress situation, your animal brain takes over, and you're trying to survive. So the best way to deter that would be proactive and to be, um, always thinking, okay. How, if something happens, where can I go, what can I do? So that's the avoid part, the A, the, the next one is, is deny. So if there's a critical incident and say you're are in a, this, the, the video that you show that Walmart put out, is there inside a Walmart? Active shooter comes in, starts shooting up the, the place, what can you do to deny access to yourself? What can you do to put yourself in a situation where that person, that shooter, or that person who's, uh, suspect. Has no means to get to you? Is that going into a room and locking yourself, is that going to, uh, well, going to your room and locking yourself is the last resort. But getting yourself away from the person, denying them access to you. Don't become a victim. So that's, like I said, A, avoid, D is deny, the last one is defend that we teach. And what defend means, when all else fails, you can't avoid the situation, you can't, you can't deny them access to you. Now you have to defend yourself, you're fighting for your life, you have to do whatever it takes to defend yourself. Defend your family, defend your coworkers if you have to, what are you gonna do to defend yourself, play dirty if you have to. You know, hit them in spots that are, that they're, they're, that normally you wouldn't, you know, so that's, that's the gist of ADD. Avoid, deny and defend, and the best thing we can say is, you have to be prepared, you have to have a formulated plan. And it, and it, and it's. It's sad to say that we live in a society now where that's the way we have to think. In, in the training, well, has that ever happened in Hawaii, have we ever had an active shooter or a critical incident in Hawaii? And the answer is yes, there's been, you know, there's zero. And the answer is yes, there's been, you know, there's zero on it. There's been uh there's been the McKenison Building, um there's been Pearl Harbor, right? The the we had a shooter at Pearl Harbor, that was one of the more recent ones. So at HPD, when we go through our training, it's not a matter of when we train for this, because we constantly do train and recall trainings and whatnot for this type of event. Every time we go, they tell us it's not a matter of if it's gonna happen in Hawaii, it's a matter of when it's gonna happen. So the best thing we can do is prepare ourselves. Um like I said, in a nutshell, I mean, there's a whole lot more training that goes with it. Uh there's videos that we have, we talk about Columbine High School, which was actually the the beginning of an active shooter, that's where we actually got the term active shooter. It talks about how there was no training back then, teachers weren't trained, that's why there were so many casualties. Um the goal with this training is we go to schools, we go to community um searches, neighborhood boards, and we do this training, that way we'll try to get that information out to as many people as we can, because when you have the training, then you kind of can formulate a way to get yourself out of it. So in a nutshell, hour and a half usually takes to go through all that, but there's a lot of videos, there's a lot of um statistics. And I'd be more than willing to come in person to you guys to give you the full training on that. But if anything else, all I want you to remember is ADD, Avoid, Deny, and Defend. You do those things, and your chances of survival of an active shooter or a critical incident uh really, really does increase. Any any question, I went kind of fast, but I was trying to put it in a nutshell.
No, you're good, any questions, any question from the board?
No.
Anybody question online, question from the community? One more thing I wanted to add, yeah, one more thing I wanted to add, if I can just briefly, is situational awareness.
Like I said, the
So always to be aware of your surroundings and your environment, those that are in it, those that are behaving, or showing behaviors or presenting themselves in such a way that could cause alarm, and to create distance. Because if you can avoid like the very first letter E, start with that, create distance between you and yourself, wherever you could be, you could be at the mall, you could be walking across the street, walking next to a person or at the bus stop, and that person could snap, crackle, pop it before you know it turns into a critical event. So I think situational awareness is is very important also to not overlook, uh to just be aware of your surroundings and be in the moment wherever you're at.
Yeah, that that is that is basically what it comes down to, any crime, have you have you folks ever heard of the crime triangle?
No.
So every crime requires three things, it requires means, opportunity, and a desire, right? So the means and opportunity and desire, of the three, we can only control the opportunity. That's the only thing we can control, we can't control the means, does does the suspect have the means to commit the crime, right? We can't control their desire, we can't control their their desire if they want to commit the crime. So all we can do is control the opportunity. And like you said, that's being aware of the situation, not putting yourself in a situation where you become an easy target, where you become the next victim. So um
Yes, right.
Yeah, like I said, i- if if you want the full phrase training, I'd be more than happy to do it, which i- it it really doesn't have to be in person, we we've done it quite a few times um on Zoom, and it takes up, like I said, at least an hour, hour and a half, when you, when we give the presentation, there's a lot of questions at the end. But tha- that's the gist of it.
Okay, thank you so much, Jose Martinez, um Sergeant Martinez, we're gonna move forward, thank you so much for the presentation, I'll be following up with you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh next presentation, we're gonna go for Equity Docket, Mike S. uh Wallerstein, Public Utilities Commission.
Hi there, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi. Great, I'm just gonna put my slides up on the screen, and we'll get started. How does that look? Can people see that alright?
Yes.
Great, so my name is Mike Wallerstein, and I'm an attorney with the Public Utilities Commission, and I'm here to talk to you about our Energy Equity and Justice Docket, uh in hopes that you or anybody you know who wants to will come and participate. So first things first, uh who is the PUC? What is the PUC, I'll give you a quick overview, and basically, it uh we regulate utilities, and by utilities, uh Hawaiian Electric, Hawaii Gas, Young Brothers, KIC, Fine Telcom, certain private order companies, and uh lots and lots of uh motor carriers. There's a there might even be a few others, but the basic idea that most people know is rates, all of these utilities have a rate, and they can only charge that rate uh that the commission provides. But what the commission does more broadly, and I think this is why this is important, is our mission is to try and align private action with the public interest, in other words, to make these private entities do their work in a way that uh provides essential services to the public at a at a reasonable price with safety, with reliability. That's our mission, so uh how do we do that? Well, mainly what we do is these dockets, and our dockets are really just a way to organize our work, so we um if we're interested in a particular topic, we'll open a docket on that topic, anything, any document related to that, uh that topic goes in that docket. You can access all of that online, I'll show you how to do that a little later. So that's just a very brief intro of the commission. And now I want to talk to you about a particular docket, which is the Energy Equity and Justice Docket, so it has a number, you can see, uh twenty twenty two zero two five zero, this is how you find all of the documents related to it. Uh and we've divided the work of this docket into five tracks, so equity and justice is a very big topic. So we we tried to make it a little bit more accessible by splitting the work in these five ways, and I'll I'll talk about them each individually. So first is procedural equity. And what we mean there is how do people do business with us? For the most part, it's through lawyers, and that's fine if you can afford a lawyer, that's fine if you're a utility that has lots of lawyers on staff, but for most people, they don't have a lawyer, and it can be really difficult to do business with the commission without a lawyer. We try to help people as we can, but on an individual basis, but what we're trying to do here in this docket is make ourselves more accessible across the board. So to figure out ways to communicate more clearly, to uh make it easier for people to participate, whenever they want to, however they want to, to make it easier for people to know what's going on at the commission, so that's our procedural track. Next is affordability, this this I hope is uh pretty obvious, but Hawaii has the highest electric rates in the nation. And electric, uh utility bills, not just electric bills, but utility bills generally present a real affordability problem uh that for lots and lots of our our residents. And we're looking at ways to uh to address some of those. In particular, right now, we're looking at disconnections, the processes by which um the utility uh turns off utility service, so if your power gets cut off for non-payment, that's that's the typical one. So we're looking at uh what kind of communication has to happen, uh how often it happens, to whom it happens. Lots of potential uh policy outcomes there, but that that's the second broad topic. The third topic is citing and hosting of energy infrastructure, so think about where generators are located. We look at citing is uh looking forward, where are new generators going to be located? It's not just generators, but that's the most common one, and hosting is looking backwards, uh what communities already host energy infrastructure, uh utility infrastructure. And then the work of this track is to figure out what uh what those communities' burdens are for for the hosting, and what potential uh benefits could be given to them to offset those burdens. That's the hosting side, the citing side may look at um few potentially rules about where these things can be cited, what processes need to happen. That's the citing, that's the work of the citing and hosting track. Next is equitable access uh to clean energy. The idea here is, I'm sure you've all seen it, uh around town, lots of houses have solar panels on their roofs, uh some don't. The ones that do, uh the residents will likely have reduced electric bills because of those solar panels. But I think well above forty percent of our population rents, so they don't have control of their roof. So they can't decide to put solar panels on their roof, even if they want to, even if they can, even if they could afford to. Uh other people might control their roof but can't afford it, it's a it's an expensive upfront investment, so. What we're looking at in this track is ways to make uh the benefits of renewable energy more accessible to more people. Lots of potential policies there. And finally, uh this track is called Utility Performance Tracking, uh I think of it just as measuring equity. What is, what data do we need to understand whether our utilities are providing equitable outcomes? Uh so look at, disconnections fits in here too, but there there are other examples, basically, if we have the data, we can then develop policies to make sure we're getting more equitable outcomes. So that's what we're looking at in this track. So I'm here really in hopes that I can interest some of you or some of your constituents to get involved. I want to offer you three three ways to do that. Uh one, you can subscribe to the docket, you'll get emails about anything that's going on in the docket, and I'll show you how to do that. You can attend meetings, our next one is next week, uh on the twenty second at nine thirty AM, um where we'll be discussing disconnections. And the third way you can do it is file public comments, so let's let's walk through all of those. So if you want to subscribe to the docket, or if you want to look at any of the documents that have been filed in the docket, you can go to this website here. Uh you'll enter the docket number right in here, and then you click search. Then what comes up is the first thing, this is your docket number again, it's pursuant to proceeding to investigate energy equity. If you click on this arrow over on the right, you can do these things, you can view, or you you can subscribe. If you subscribe, uh you give it your email, and then you will get emails every time something new is filed in this docket. If you click view, then you can see everything that's already been filed in the docket, you don't need to do one uh to do the email. You can view without subscribing and vice versa. So that's how you can get the most details about this docket. If you'd like to file a public comment, you can do so at any time, just send an email to PUC dot comments at Hawaii dot gov. It helps if you identify what docket you want to comment about, so if you put the the docket number in the subject line, that'll help make sure it gets the right people. And then, of course, you can do paper filings either by mail or in person uh at the commission's offices. And that's really it, I just wanted to give you a quick overview of this docket and how you might want to get involved, so if there are any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the board online? Any questions from the community? Hearing that, thank you.
Wait, wait, yeah, yes.
Okay.
Kathy.
Kathy?
Hi Kathy Nee, hi, can you hear me? Kath- I'm Kathy Nee from Senator Kim's office, um Mr. Wallerstein, um we did have some constituents, would you be able to provide more information about the PUC's hearing about those gas rates?
Ah, uh no, I'm the wrong person to do that.
Okay.
What I can do, what I can do is direct you to the commission's website, uh and I would expect that all the information you need on those is there. That's PUC dot Hawaii dot gov.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other community concerns, I mean, any questions? Okay, thank you so much, thank you so much, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, take care, um we're moving along with residents and community concerns.
Hi, come take a seat.
You can go ahead and have a seat at the table, and you can state your your name for the record.
Hi, aloha, my name is Sherry Hauser, um I'm a current employee at the Hilton Hawaiian Village, um I've been there for about eighteen years. I'm sure you've all heard in the news that the Hilton Hawaiian Village is um on strike, uh today is day twenty three. Um we've um been negotiating for months, and unfortunately, um it has come to no resolution, to the point where eighteen hundred of us have had to walk off our job. You know, it's it's hard marching in the hot sun, um you know, singing, chanting, trying to stay positive to get from week to week, knowing that we're coming across a month, and of course, there's, you know, utility bills, rent, mortgage, kids' payments, and so on. So you know, we're, we want to build uh, you know, a safer, happier community, um you know, that will last a generation to come. Um because we believe, you know, one job should be enough. You know, the Hilton is not owned by Hilton itself, it's owned by Park Hotel and Resorts, and um they are a real estate investment company that answers to a um board of shareholders. So you know, they took considerable um advantage of us during COVID, after COVID, by making cuts. So they've cut employee staffing, it's affected our workload, we're overworked, underpaid, and you know, under, not uh undervalued. So we are struggling to get ahead, you know, just trying to service the guests that we have. The Hilton Hawaiian Village is a full-service hotel, and it's difficult to to um, you know, our guests that do return year after year, and we're having to explain to them all these service cuts, um the perks and the amenities that they're used to are no longer, you know, something that we can offer them. Um I stand with, you know, I'm one of eighteen hundred um local residents, and we're out there on the strike line, we're asking for the community support, neighbors across to um not cross our picket lines. You know, don't host family events, conventions, vacation, honor our solidarity. When you do cross the picket line, you're supporting the corporate greed from this company, uh their interest, um you're not supporting the the working class, the families, the families in this neighborhood and community.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for the board?
Um is there any, because um what am I, sorry, hold on, we canceled that. Um because my grandma is actually a, is actually working in Hilton, so she's walking along the line with you guys. And I was curious if there's any way we could donate any money, or food, or water, like where can we contact to help give that?
Well, sure, so uh um and I'm Ben Sedasky with the Local Five, um we do have a hardship fund that people can donate to, um you know, either in person or I think online, it's uh it's uniteherelocalfive.org, which is a little bit different from our like union's normal website, but it's, yeah, yeah, uniteherelocalfive.org uh for hardship donations, but you know, anything anybody brings to the line is always greatly appreciated, and and folks, you know, if if folks are able to be there, um I think that also just gives a a a big moral boost, just showing up and, you know, um and being part of it.
We've had a lot of community organizations come out, um we had Kapilani nurses come and and you know, join us on the strike line. Of course, the other hotels that have interest in the um, you know, our contract expiring, the the Hyatt Marriott uh Kyoya property, you know, they've come out in solidarity and and walked with us, we of course had um everything broadcasted on the news, you could talk about that, the political party that came out and joined us.
Yeah, yeah, we've had a few different, um you know, we had Senator uh uh Takuta, I mean Rep. Rep. Takuta, right? Come out so far, um we've had uh Della Alblati, we've had, you know, some other uh politicians as well, who've been, you know, willing to come out, some other uh guests, and I and I I would say like, you know, one of the big things that we're concerned about is not just the future of, you know, the work for workers at Hilton Hawaiian Village, although that's obviously very important, but you know, these are jobs that sustain the whole community, and and whatever happens at those hotels, you know, it, you know, they get raises at union hotels, the non-union hotels will give raises to try to match, right? And generally, and and you know, and these are the wages that people bring home, these are This is what, this is the benefit.
The level of wage, yeah.
Yeah, it's like the, the benefit of tourism that stays in Hawaii.
Exactly.
And if we're gonna have tourism in Hawaii, like, this is what we should be getting from it, right? We, it should be, it should be working for Hawaii's people. We shouldn't be priced out of, of, of this place. You know, people, local families shouldn't have to be moving to Las Vegas because they can't afford it here. And so, you know, it's really a broader struggle and, and it really is about sort of holding not just Hilton, not just Park Hotels, but also all of these corporations accountable, you know, to all of their workforces and, and to the community of Hawaii. Because, yeah, I mean, it, it does seem like, you know, just like with the AI stuff, it's, it's like, they will do whatever they think they can do to make money, like, generally, these corporations. And they'll, they'll advance so quickly, whether or not there's safety measures in place, whether or not they're thinking of the long-term consequences, whatever the negative impacts on the community might be. As long as it's profitable, they'll move it forward. And that's what we have to push back against. So that's, you know, that's kind of the, the larger, um.
Well, you're at a Kulehipalama neighborhood board. If this is a working-class, hardcore, working-class community and neighborhood, and this gets played over and over again, and many people watch this and we do respond. And as the chair, I do support you one hundred percent. I know how it feels to work in a hotel and work at Hyatt. You're just saying I work at Hilton Hawaiian Village. You have tons of family and friends through generations that work. And I myself, and once upon a time, once upon a time, worked in housekeeping. And so many men and women worked their hearts out, blood, sweat, and tears to provide for their families. And the least that a corporation that makes millions upon millions of dollars every year that leaves the state could at least give you what you deserve to have, is a decent wage to live and support your family. So Kulehipalama supports you one hundred percent.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that. Absolutely.
Anything that we can do, anything more, just let us know. Please reach out.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. I appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Any concerns? Is there community concerns? Here you go. Thank you so much. We're gonna move along. And the next page is city elected officials. Mayor Mick Longyard is representative, deputy director Stephen Corby. I'm in the Department of Technology.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, good evening. My name is Stephen Corby, the mayor's representative and deputy director for the Department of Information Technology. I will start off with highlights from the mayor's newsletter for October, which can also, I'll actually put it into the chat. At first, an update on operations and ongoing construction for Oahu's rail transit system. The city awarded the one point six-six billion dollar city center guideway and station contract to the Tudor Karini Corporation. The city officially unveils A'ala Respite located on four point five K Street. A Kewa facility aimed at addressing homelessness. The Department of Medical Examp has reopened its E V A headquarters following five point nine million dollar renovation. For the second time in thirteen months, the city opens a new lifeguard tower, this time at Kailua Beach, helping protect more of Oahu's shorelines. Finally, an update on renovations at the Whariki Key Shell. It will temporarily close for facility upgrades from October twenty twenty-four until late March twenty twenty-five. I have three important announcements. The City Department of Environmental Services plans to increase its sewer service charges for all residential and commercial customers in fiscal year twenty twenty-six, which begins on July first twenty twenty-five. E M V wishes to present information at all upcoming neighborhood board meetings on the reasons why the increase, the amount of the increase, and what the additional revenue will be used for. We're asking all board chairs to contact Director Roger Badcock or Deputy Director Michael Kret. Call eight oh eight seven six eight three four eight six to set up your board's presentation and ask questions.
Can you say that number?
Hey, that's.
I'm sorry, one more.
Yeah, eight oh eight seven six eight three four eight six.
Thank you.
And number two, installation of speed humps on Bernice Street. A letter was delivered to this neighborhood board regarding the completion of an investigation for the installation of speed humps on Bernice Street between Kalenee Street and Kapalama Avenue. The Department of Transportation Services determined that the installation of the two speed humps along the corridor was beneficial to reducing speed. As such, with the assistance of the State of Hawaii Department of Transportation, the installation of these speed humps is scheduled to be installed. And neighborhood plan review. The Neighborhood Commission Neighborhood Plan Committee began meeting to conduct a comprehensive review of the neighborhood plan in presentation for information available on your board Google Drive. The committee currently meets on a third Monday every month at six PM. If you have any questions, please contact the Neighborhood Commission office. Next, I have three follow-up departmental issues. Hart responded to resident Thomas Beckon on trees that were cut down to be replaced along Dillonham Boulevard near Honolulu Community College. Hart has performed evaluations of the utility relocation design and guideway and stations designed to minimize the impact of the trees. The preferred option is to keep trees in place. Unfortunately, due to design limitations, the tree commodity trees near the Honolulu Community College area were in conflict with the new underground electrical lines that were placed over in lines on the Malka side of the Land Boulevard. The trees near H C C were repurposed and crafted into commemorative poles that were distributed at the thirteenth Festival of Pacific Arts and Culture. While some trees may not be able to be replaced due to utility conflicts and elevated guideway, Hart plans to replant thirty twenty-two shower trees approved by the City Department of Urban Forestry prior to the completion of the project in twenty thirty-one. The Department of Planning and Permitting responded to Mary Cullen for the house at one ninety-four Kalenee Street that was burnt three times by homeless people that have occupied the property. D P P delivered a fire damage letter to the owner requesting immediate assistance to clean the property from the general public and to obtain the required permits for any necessary work or demolition that is done on the premises. A follow-up inspection will be conducted within four months of the date of the notification letter, which is September ninth, twenty twenty. And finally, the Department of Facility Maintenance responded to Chair Uvanes regarding encampments on the Kalenee Now Bridge by Maruket Marketplace on Dillonham Boulevard. The Department of Facility Maintenance has been in contact with the State Department of Transportation Homeless Coordinator and the City of County of Honolulu's Executive Director of Homeless in regards to deploying outreach help and services to the surrounding parts of the Kalenee Street adjacent to the transportation. D F M is working on a plan to move the encampments and debris that is accumulated in a safe and efficient manner when resources and resources are available. That completes my report. Are there any questions?
Any questions to the board? Any questions from the community?
Ask for any concerns.
For the concern that I have, Stephen, is for Kapalama Canal nearest going towards, from the freeway to Hoctailing, that area, that part of the canal is severely overgrown and it needs to be dredged. It was mentioned that there was a ticket that was created. However, they did mention that several months ago, that in October, just now, it would be cleaned. However, here is October and it is not.
Yeah, I believe I do remember that from a previous meeting. And all I can do is follow up with Department Facility Maintenance because they, um, I'll have to get some updated information regards to when they can do that cleanup. And, and again, that's. Okay, so again, that's all in the, I'll say that again.
I would really appreciate that because it did mention that it was supposed to happen in October.
Yes, yes, I believe I do remember that.
Yes. So if you can please work on that, that would be, you know, really appreciated. The community, the people, the residents, they are concerned. In the event that there is a storm or something else, it's gonna cause definitely a flooding problem. We want to avoid that. Damage to homes. I don't think anybody is gonna be really happy about that. So we want to be proactive and not reactive. If we can please work on that, that would be great. Um, any other concerns? Community, online?
No.
No. Here you go. Thank you so much, Stephen. I'll see you next month.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Radien Corduro or representative?
Dee is in.
Dee?
Dee.
Dee? Dee?
Dee, are you on?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm Dee. We, um, reporting for Councilmember Corduro's office. Our copies of our report were distributed and I've also pasted the link in the chat box for those attending online. Some of the things I'll highlight united on page one, the calendar of events. Please make a note that the budget committee meeting on ten twenty-two and the parks committee meeting on ten twenty-three has been canceled. Moving on to the updates on the concerns from the community regarding speeding on Kalenee Street. The Department of Transportation Services completed their investigation and found that while some motorists were exceeding the twenty-five miles per hour speed limit, there are no significant trends in traffic collisions over the past three years. The speeding is managed with signage and enforcement by HPD at this time. DTS does not recommend adding speed humps or any traffic calming devices. HPD did monitor the area for speeding and did not find any violations during their weekly investigation. DTS has issued a work order to replace the faded speed limit twenty-five signs with larger, more visible signs. Next, the Kapalama Bridge repair project is still ongoing. The Department of Design and Construction is currently working to repair the bottom deck of the bridge, which is estimated to be completed by the end of the month or early November. Additionally, a recent investigation and inspection revealed that the bridge railing required repair. And D D C is currently assessing the necessary work for the railing and establishing a timeline for its completion. On the bottom of page one, the city is now accepting grants and aid applications for qualified nonprofit organizations, which is available through the city's grants and aid program. The sealed proposals are due to the Division of Purchasing by two PM Hawaii Standard Time on Friday, November twenty-second. And must be date and timestamp from the Division of Purchasing. A number for their help desk is listed below for further assistance. Page two, the legislative update on Bill Forty-Six Empty Home Tax lists exemptions to help determine whether a dwelling unit is classified as an empty home for taxation purposes. Bill Forty-Six passed the second reading at the October ninth council meeting and has been referred to the Budget Committee. Due to the complexity of this issue, Budget Chair Corduro intends to hold a special meeting to further discuss the bill. On the bottom of page two, the pedestrian crisis in America. Councilmember Corduro joined community members, state and city agencies, and community groups dedicated to save streets for all Honolulu's Vision Zero goals of ending traffic violence on Oahu. On page three and four are events that Councilmember Corduro attended and programs that's being offered by the Office of Hawaiian Affairs Malama Loan Program. This concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to address them or take them back to the team for follow-ups.
Thank you so much. Any questions to the board? Any questions to the board?
Eric.
Eric, online. Go ahead.
No, I'll keep it quick. Um, I know, um, councilmember had a part in to save the streets to school and there's that excellent sidewalk along Cam Four. But what I've noticed, and, and I'm sorry to bring this up with HPD, but, you know, especially during the evening hours, people are parking, they're driving their cars behind the white barriers, behind the no parking signs, and parking on the sidewalk. And it just forces you to go out into the road. And I was wondering if, you know, it's great to have a sidewalk, but it defeats the purpose. And I was wondering if we could have some parking enforcement maybe during the evenings to kind of make sure people don't park.
Okay. So at that time when you see that happening, does anyone call HPD to report it?
No, I didn't. Um, I was passing it on to you if you want me to do that, but I was wondering if you could pass it on.
Oh, yeah, we can pass it on.
I mean, I can call it every time I see a car, but it's, uh, you know.
Yeah, we'll pass that information on, but it does help to call HPD at that time, so they can see it, yeah? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. It happens almost every night though, just by the way.
Okay, we'll pass it on.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for the board? Any questions from the community? Here you go. Thank you so much, Dee.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move along. Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos Tam?
Aloha, Chair. Aloha, board members and community members. This is Lynn Robinson. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead, Lynn.
Hi. Um, super briefly, I've put a link to the news, um, the newsletter in the chat. So the city council formed an illegal game room task force to address the ongoing public safety concerns in our communities. Uh, that was back in July. So the task force, uh, report was released, um, on Tuesday, October eighth, and included, um, some recommendations, uh, to make cooperation between HPD and the Department of Planning and Permitting, to issue violation codes to landlords, a standard practice. Some of you may know that that's been, um, kind of a cooperative thing that's been happening. And, um, they're recommending that that, you know, continue because it's been effective. Also, to invest in other areas like funding for public education and gambling addiction treatment. There's other recommendations, but that's kind of, um, some of the highlights. Uh, Councilmember Dos Santos Tam expects for the council to start acting on those, those recommendations by the beginning of next year. So still working very hard. There's a couple other bills in the queue. He'd like to codify this so that, um, you know, we can, regardless of who's directing at, um, D P P and whom, you know, and at HPD, that we can make sure that these practices continue. I also want, we wanted to add that the Department of Consumer Advocacy, it's called D C A. It is a little-known agency within the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs. They have helpful resources for utility assistance for energy and telecommunications costs. And they've been really trying to get the word out to our working families about, and Kapuna, about, uh, their programs. So I'm gonna put the link to their utility assistance in the chat. Yeah, I've been to a couple of their info briefings and it seems like they've been funded. They have excellent resources and they're just really trying to get the word out. So I think that our neighborhood boards are a great conduit for that. And also, please mark your calendars for the Avai'au Limu Neighborhood Park Cleanup. That's gonna be on Saturday, November sixteenth, starting at nine AM. We, we've been doing these cleanups, um, throughout the district and this, um, this neighborhood park could use a little love. So our office will be partnering, partnering with the Department of Parks and Rec. And the cleanup supplies will all be, um, provided. Just bring your water and wear your sunscreen. And for more information, you can contact me. Of course, I'll put my, um, contact information is also in the chat. So I think that that's all I have for tonight. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions? Any questions to the community? No. Thank you so much, Lynn.
You bet. You guys take care. Aloha.
Thank you. Moving on to community updates. US Army Garrison Hawaii Military Report, Selena?
Hello.
Let me take your I'll just go ahead and switch your name and get right into it.
Um, Selena Gentkowski with U S Army Garrison Hawaii. Um, we just have a couple of announcements for this month. Our next hiring fair is November nineteenth at Oia Mono Military Reservation Gym. Runs from eight thirty to two P M. It's open to the public. There's, uh, job offers and provisional hiring for the day. Um, you just need two references, proof of ID, social security card, resume. You can bring in an application or you can come in, you can just walk in. So that'll be that'll be November nineteenth at A M R Gym. Um, our annual exercise has now been completed. Um, there's going to, there's still going to be military convoys on the roads and helicopter noise. Um, but the the actual exercise is done. And we should see an end to all kind of movement by the end of October. So that will be it. And then if anybody has any community concerns for the Garrison, you're more than welcome to call us at eight oh eight seven eight seven one five two eight. Or you can email us at USAG dot Hawaii dot C O M R E L at army dot mil. And that's all.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the board? Any questions online from the community? Hereina, I will be in first place with you soon. Have a good evening. Thank you. Okay, we're moving along to state elected officials, Senator Carl Rhodes or our representative.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Braden Chung and tonight I will be representing Senator Carl Rhodes. Uh, tonight Senator Carl Rhodes would just like to, uh, make it known that a updated, uh, twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five COVID vaccine has been approved for use. COVID shots are similar to flu shots in that they're, they target the most prevalent strains of COVID. The vaccine is not meant to prevent symptoms of every COVID variant, rather the aim is to protect against severe illnesses, hospitalization and death. Uh, three million dollars in capital investment project funds was released to H C C Honolulu Community College to finance renovation and repurpose of building, uh, eight eight zero five. Again, that is eighty-eight zero five. Uh, and Senator Rhodes is currently preparing bills for our next session. If you would like to, uh, present any bills, please let me know. And if you would like to, uh, present bills to Senator Rhodes directly, uh, he isn't here currently, but you can contact him and, uh, schedule a Zoom meeting. And if you have any questions or concerns, uh, you can let me know now or you can email, uh, or call Senator Rhodes.
Okay, any questions to the board? Or online or community? Cars with?
Hi, since you said you were, um, accepting proposals for bills, um, if it's possible, um, can I contact Senator Rhodes about regarding A I regulation and also, um, the good reforms bill?
Of course, you can, uh, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, because I do know that he did introduce it last session, so I do want to double check on that bill again.
Okay, yeah, of course, uh, you can, you can contact him. Just be aware that I think I believe currently he's in Indiana right now. So just be aware of the time difference if you like are wanting to call him, uh, by phone. So, yeah, you're, you're able to call, you're able to contact him.
Yeah.
Well, just for me, for the record, I do support that there's an addiction therapy for people of Hawaii. There I find it kind of baffling that there is no gambling addiction readily available to anybody in Hawaii, although, you know, there's a lot of people that love to travel to Vegas. So I, I would like to just put it for the record that I do support such a measure for there to be some kind of gambling addiction helping those that are suffering from that side of the If you can pass that along to Carl Rhodes, that would be great.
Of course, of course.
No. Hereina, thank you so much. Need to tell Carl Rhodes to take care and thank you for all that you do.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Moving along to Senator Donna Mercado Kim.
Aloha, Chair, board members, community. Uh, my name is Kathy Ni'i and I'm representing Senator Tim's office. Uh, Senator Tim's community report was sent out to the board. Um, one thing we would like to highlight is that a hundred thousand dollars in capital improvement funds were released to Kokua Kalii Valley Comprehensive Family Services. This project includes a feasibility study for a large-scale renovation of Judd Medical Clinic. And so we're looking forward to that, hopefully being able to provide more, um, services to the community. Um, at this time, I'm open for any questions or concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the board? Any questions from the community? Hereina, thank you so much, Kathy. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Chair. You have a good night.
You too. Moving along to Senator Glenn Wakai.
Aloha. I have a couple of traffic updates for you. Um, about three weeks ago, uh, Board Member Evelyn Cullid was complaining about all the containers that, you know, pile up particularly on Monday and Thursday mornings on snarl traffic for all of us in the Kalii area as well as beyond, um, and wanted to find out like what was Young Brothers' plans for try to get some of those containers off the road. So I met with Jay Anaw from Young Brothers last week and he said that, uh, there were a lot of plans. The first one is a short-term plan. By the end of the year, they're going to allow, uh, more traffic to come in through Libby Street, which will relieve not all, but some of the containers that are plugging up on Nimitz Highway. Uh, that's the short term. The next, uh, medium-length uh, idea was that by next year, Young Brothers, you might know that in in the harbor area, Young Brothers is next to Matson on the Sand Island side. Uh, by next year, they are going to move, uh, not Young Brothers, I'm sorry. Pasha and Matson are on Sand Island side. But next year, uh, through harbor improvements, they're going to move Pasha on the, uh, uh, the Kalii's Kapalama side of the, um, of the area harbor, and that will be adjacent to the Young Brothers lot, which will take a lot of the Pasha containers off the lot. And keep in mind that on Tuesdays and Mondays, uh, there are fifteen hundred containers that need to get to the neighbor islands. And that's the unfortunate issue that, uh, containers have to get to to Young Brothers. So that was a medium solution. The long-term solution, of course, is the ten-year harbor master development plan. In that plan, there are more spaces available for the containers to line up, but that, uh, is a decade away from us. So I just wanted to follow up with, uh, Evelyn's concerns and, uh, let you know what Young Brothers is up to. In the similar light, uh, sometimes those of us who are going to Sand Island, uh, State Park, you see a whole bunch of containers that are lined up on the side of the road and are blocking the bike path. One of our neighbors is an avid bicyclist in Kalii and complained, uh, took it over to Matson. Matson says that there are trucking agencies, not them, that are leaving the containers, uh, wrongfully in the bike path. They have issued a, uh, notice to all of their truckers to reduce, or not reduce, just don't leave your trailers in the bike lanes on the way to Sand Island District Park. And on a fun note, Representative Gannon and I had a really good time with Kalii Kai Elementary School students last week, talking to them about government and, uh, encouraging them to be more active in their government and having an understanding of how taxes work and how we spend money to improve our community. So, uh, that's my report for this week, for this month.
Thank you so much, Senator Wakai. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the community? Thank you so much, Senator, for all your hard work and all that you do.
Yep, mahalo. Aloha.
Aloha. Okay, we're moving along to Representative, um, Danny Holt. Representative Sunny Gannon. Okay, uh, Governor Josh Green's representative.
Uh, aloha, chair and members.
Hi, Dre.
Hi, um, I am going to put the link, um, for the governor's newsletter in the chat. Um, the key highlights in the newsletter this month are about governors, uh, travel to Japan to strengthen Hawaii or Japan relations. And then there are some highlights in the newsletter, um, around Maui recovery and rebuilding. Um, I don't have any other updates other than the contents of the newsletter. But if there are any questions about what Senator Wakai just presented about the, um, Young Brothers congestion alleviation efforts, happy to answer those questions as the Deputy Director of Transportation for Harvard.
Any questions from the board?
Loy.
Loy, go ahead, Loy.
Hi, Loy Pohano. Um, I have a question about the temporary solutions about them lining up on Libby Street. I think right now what Evelyn brought up too is, because I work right there too, that a lot of the containers are already lining up on Libby Street. So I wanted to know what what's a temporary solution if there are.
Sure, that's a great question. And so I'll just preface my response by saying, uh, D O T and Y B are still working on the details. So what I present is subject to change. But a lot of the congestion that you see on Nimitz as well as on Libby, um, is due to a transaction that is occurring at the Waikamilo Gate. And so what we are proposing to do is before the containers leave Sand Island to conduct that transaction on the Sand Island side of the bridge. So instead of that transaction occurring on Waikamilo Gate, that causes a backup, right? Especially if there's an issue with the truck and they got to go check the paperwork and everything. Um, that is basically what is causing the congestion at the gate. So if we move that transaction off-site, what we expect will happen is it will expedite trucks entering the, and so what what the discussion is right now is the, the container trucks will enter Libby Gate and then Waikamilo, and this is just going to be on Mondays and Thursdays for now. Again, this is subject to change. Um, Waikamilo Gate will be an exit-only gate. So as the congestion on Nimitz gets alleviated coming into that gate, and then there should be a very quick queue on, oh, uh, I'm sorry, on Awiki Street going into Libby Gate. So right now, uh, the two parties, so D O T and Y B are working on testing the I T equipment to make sure that that transaction that I'm describing can happen on Sand Island. And we are like, um, Senator Wakai mentioned, Y B is expecting that this will be done before the end of the year. Hopefully sooner than that, but that's, that's the proposed solution that we are working through.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Um, Dre, is there any? Dre, I have one more, um, comment concern. For for that area that we're talking about, yes, there is a lot of congestion. I was, uh, you know, I brought it upon myself to drive around that area during morning rush hour. And yes, there is a lot of traffic. With that being said, I know you folks are actively working on addressing that. Second, O triple C and the movement of O triple C to Halawa and the increase of programs. And in the meantime, until that does occur, I do believe that the infirmary and the nurses in O triple C should have more funding and more support. I feel anybody that is not feeling well, whether they're free or they're incarcerated, should have the utmost care and treatment along with those that are providing that treatment. So if there's anything that can be done to increase the revenue, increase the funds in order to make that happen, so those that are ill and sick and recovering or injured could have the best care possible even when they're incarcerated. So if you can please pass that along.
Yes, happy to do that. I will, um, relay that inquiry to the Department of Corrections and we'll hopefully get a response and relay it back at the November board meeting. Thank you.
Spectacular. Thank you so much for all your hard work and all that you do. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Chair.
Um, we're moving along to committee reports. Any committee reports for safety? I think we went over that and there was a presentation for, uh, the active shooter training. So I think we all enjoyed that. We can always reach out to H P D at any time, uh, for Sergeant Martinez. And then for education, I think, um, cultures, dog, a pint were informed. You did an excellent job the last meeting. Thank you so much for all your efforts. I believe you're still working on that and more. So excellent job, dog and cards. Um, and then for health, Chair Pintor and Ibonnis, I just addressed with, um, Dre the issues of the infirmary and getting more done for the nurses and those that are ill. So that's the report. Uh, community resources and educational institutions. Honolulu three one one app. Honolulu three one one app is the official mobile application for the city of Kauai, Honolulu. Honolulu three one provides a free, simple and intuitive platform for people to report popos, broken streetlights, cracked sidewalks, illegal dumping, violated lights, broken signs and more via your smartphone. So please check that out. Um, Honolulu three one one link is H T T P S, um, please look at it online. Announcement, the next Kalii Palama Neighborhood Board number fifteen meeting is scheduled to be on Wednesday, November twentieth, twenty twenty-four at seventeen. The Kalii Palama Neighborhood Board number fifteen reporters can be seen on Olelo, channel organized at W W dot olelo dot org slash live at the following times. First Monday of each month at nine P M, second and fourth Thursday of each month at eleven A M.
Or on YouTube also.
Or on YouTube also. Thank you so much. Meeting adjourned.
Good meeting. Very, very meeting.
Thank you so much, everybody.